I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please take will? Karen Adams. Karen Berry. Joseph Demott.
Here.
Joyce J.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Davis Reinhardt. Wanda Sang.
Here.
And Mike Stites.
Here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of November 23, 2009?
So moved.
Second. Any changes? Please poll the council on the minutes. Motion carries eight to zero. Thank you. We have one ceremony tonight. I will come down to the podium. On the agenda tonight, it said that the Optimist Club presentation for the Wheat Ridge High School fields, actually that's the Rotary, so I'm going to please ask the Rotarians to come forth, Bob, Tim, and Dick Matthews, and also Joyce Manley. Is Joyce here? This is the last payment on the fields at the high school that the Rotary had allocated through the city of Wheat Ridge, and I'll ask maybe Bob and Joyce to explain that tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's actually the fourth or the fifth one. So we made a total commitment to the field for $15,000, and we've been doing it in $3,000 increment. And we're very pleased for that the Wheat Ridge Rotary is giving you a check for $3,000.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank the Rotary for their continued support over the years for the community and the city, truly all the programs and activities that they help provide are benefit to our community. And I'm sure all our high school students are enjoying the turf field at the high school. It's a great addition to the facility. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Wheat Ridge Rotary for their support of the community and the high school fields. We'll move on to citizens' right to speak. Citizens' right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. When you are speaking at the podium, you will see a green light when you start speaking, a yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and a red light when your time is up. So if you're here for a public comment, please step forward and spell your last name for the record and your city and/or address.
Hi, good evening. My name is Gretchen Cervey-Ny, your former mayor, and congratulations to all those newly elected, and thank you for everyone that's still serving. I really appreciate that. I'm here, as you may know, that I'm working on the Colorado Commission on Aging as well as the Jefferson County Transportation Committee for Aging. And because of that, I was at the Jeff Tag meeting last Wednesday, which is the Jefferson County Transportation Advocacy and Action Group. It was formed when I was still mayor and was mainly for elected officials so we could work together in Jefferson County and get some projects through CDOT as opposed to working against each other. So what I found out is that Kathy Hartman, who's chairing it, did make the comment through the whole time that this commission or group was formed for elected officials, and there were only two elected officials there. Lots of staff. So I would suggest to those of you who don't have to be at work at 7:00 or 7:30 in the morning, that you might want to show up in the audience with me, and it's the second Wednesday of the month. And part of that reason is, because that's your 32nd in I-70 project, it's on the list for the faster funds. I'm sure Karen can tell you about that. However, what I've heard is that less money's coming in than they projected. And the Transportation Commission, which is essentially the Board of Directors for CDOT, and they are appointed by the governor, and so they can scuttle anything. And they, this year, are looking mainly at safety and grant grassroots support for any project. So I would assume that having, you know, the elected officials there would really make a difference. And I know what I'm going to do for aging, but probably Mr. Peranto can tell you how you would be helpful for the others. But I think just sitting in the transportation would be educational for you. And I think that's all. I'm just giving you a tip of gossip that I learned. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else here for public comment on any item not on the agenda? Please step forward. Right. Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes tonight? So the agenda will stand as published. Item one is the consent agenda. Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 1A, ratification of Mayor DeTulio's urban renewal authority appointment. 1B, ratification of Mayor DeTulio's budget oversight committee appointment. 1C, Resolution 63-2009 amending the fiscal year 2009 general fund and recreation center fund to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriations in the amounts of $199,302 and $105,348 respectively for the purposes of repairing damage to city assets caused by the July 20, 2009 storm. And 1D, motion to cancel the Wheat Ridge City Council study session of December 21, 2009, and the regular meeting of December 28, 2009. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve item 1A, B, C, and D.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda, seconded by councilmembers Reinhardt and Sang. Discussion on the consent agenda? Please poll the council. Motion carries eight to zero. Thank you. We have a public hearing that I believe we're going to continue. Item number two is Council Bill 30-2009. Councilmember Sang?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill number 30-2009, an ordinance amending Section 11-183 of the City Code of Laws to require pawn brokers to submit electronic records and digital photographs of property and persons who complete pawn transactions in the city.
At pre-meeting, we did discuss that if there was anyone, I don't see anyone signed up, but if there's anyone signed up for this hearing, I would encourage council to accommodate them tonight, and we'll take any testimony and then take the motion to continue.
So we are still in the public hearing for this, Council Bill 30-2009. Do we have anybody here to speak tonight on Council Bill 30-2009 on the pawn brokers? Okay, that's good. Motion's in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to continue the public hearing on Council Bill 30-2009 until January 25, 2010 at 7:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to continue, seconded by councilmember Langworthy. Discussion on the postponement? Please poll the council. Motion carries eight to zero. Thank you. We'll move on to decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item three is Resolution 53-2009. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Resolution 53-2009, a resolution adopting the city budget and appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies in the amount specified for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for the 2010 budget year. Section 10.9 of the Wheat Ridge City Charter requires that budget be adopted by resolution on or before the final day, December 15, 2009, established by state statutes for the clarification of the next year's tax levy to the county. The proposed 2010 budget includes $23,891,701 in expenses in the general fund, $350,000 in expenses in the capital investment program fund, and $4,8012,339 in expenses in special revenue funds for a total budget of $29,054.40, or $29 million, excuse me.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution number 53-2009, a resolution adopting the city budget and appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies in the amount specified for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for the 2010 budget year with the following amendments: transfer $1 million from the general fund budget, undesignated reserves to the 2010 CIP budget to appropriate the necessary funding for various street preventative maintenance projects.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by councilmember Sang. We'll move on to public comment. Do we have anybody here to speak on Resolution 53-2009, the 2010 budget? Please step forward. Please spell your last name for the record and your city and/or your address.
Mary Cavara, C-A-V-A-R-R-A, Wheat Ridge, and I'm the District III Representative to the Budget Committee and former city treasurer, and I'd just like to make a couple points on the budget, and I commend you for your diligence. I think that you all have difficult decisions, but I'm concerned about the surplus, the dwindling of the surplus, and for these two reasons. One, that we don't have a new revenue source immediately on the horizon. Two, our sales tax has generated a substantial portion from five retailers, and if one of which would go away, we'd be in serious trouble. So I've always been concerned about the health of the surplus. And I'd also like to say, there is a comment in the staff presentation about waiting till this economic wave is over, and I'd like to caution particularly new members that things weren't that good a few years ago. When I was treasurer during '05 and '06, the sales tax numbers, let me give you a few numbers briefly. 2005, $14.7. 2006, $14.8 million. 2007, $14.9 million. Those were not great increases. Total revenue in '05 was $25 million. In '06, it went up $1 million, but operating expenses went up $2 million. So even before the economic problems, when other cities were seeing 8 percent growth, our revenue was essentially flat. So I encourage you not to put too much stock in, things are going to be wonderful after the recession is over. So I would like to also say, I think the Budget Committee would be very willing to reconvene at the direction of council, but again, very hard decisions. We presented a list of recommendations, both expenditure cuts and revenue increases. There's not a single one that would not meet with opposition. Every single one of them would be difficult. So again, I commend you for your diligence, and I do think you have a difficult job. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else to speak on the budget before I move to council comments? Council discussion or comments on the budget? Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we approve the amendment as read, that we would put $1 million from the general fund budget, undesignated reserve into the CIP budget, this would not allow us to have a little bit of security that we may need for the general reserve at this time. My concern is, I understand these projects that need to be done, the chip sealing and the projects that Tim has brought forward, and for our infrastructure, they're critical. But my concern is the hurry. What is the hurry in that we don't know what November, Mr. Goff, we don't know what November and December has brought in sales tax. Is that correct? We don't have those figures.
We have Novembers in sales tax through November of 2009 compared year-to-date. It is down 6.5 percent.
Oh, I didn't know that until this minute either. So that's not a good sign. Okay, so as our previous treasurer said, there are five retailers that are kind of our stalwart stay for our sales tax, one of which, I assume, is one of the grocery stores, which in fact is struggling at this point in time and have dropped some of their prices, Safeway. They would be someone to watch, that we would be cautious of. I'm just wanting to be very cautious in that perhaps it would be more astute and more sensible for us to allow that money to stay there. We certainly can move it to CIP. Mr. Peranto, if we would decide, say, after we got some more figures in, especially our year-end figures, and maybe even at the least our year-end figures, but hopefully even the first quarter of next year, could you have time to go out for bid on these projects in the CIP budget that are mentioned? Does that allow you to do that in a timely manner? Or does this decision critical that you know in January, January 1st, to go out for bid on these projects?
We can go out to bid at any time. The earlier we go out to bid, the better chances we have of competition and could see some savings in the project pricing.
And the savings be because the economy right now, we're getting, seeing better prices come in, or just because January's a better time to go out to bid than February or March or April?
January and February is generally a better time to go out to bid for road projects, and as the contractors fill their needs for work, then there's less competition.
Okay, thank you. I struggle with this because I'm very much in favor and commend Mr. Peranto and his team for going out for the chip seal and the projects that we do to maintain the roads. Our infrastructure is critical. But in the same regard, my conservative side said perhaps we could wait till the year-end figures come in, and also wait for the first quarter figures to come in for our sales tax. And as a sidebar to that, I also know and commend the mayor for wanting to convene the citizen budget oversight committee and hope that that would happen quickly, because the last citizen, or hopefully the ongoing with added members of the citizens' budget oversight committee's recommendations, as Mrs. Cavara pointed out, none of them are going to be easy as far as improving our revenue stream, and what we're going to try to do to improve revenue streams, they're all going to be difficult decisions. So I will not be supporting the amendment, but I will support the budget as it stands prior to Mr. Stites' amendment.
Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. While I agree with Karen that it's a challenge with the money that we have and continually seeing numbers go down, but the other concern I have is if we don't keep our streets safe, we're not going to get ambulances from the hospitals to the places that need them, we won't get our police from our station to the houses that need them, and the fire department where we need them. And the other thing is, is we can't get retail into Wheat Ridge if we have crumbling streets. Now, I mean, again, I understand, I mean, I'm a fiscally conservative person in my household, and the budget is very tight, but I also am aware that, you know, if I don't keep my car running, I'm not going to get to my job. So I mean, while I would like to see more money coming in than we have, I strongly feel that we really do need to get that budget oversight, working on ways to get more money, because if we put this off now, we'll just put it off again, and we've been putting off a lot of work in our Public Works Department, and they've probably taken the single largest hit in all the cuts that we've made, is the Public Works, and they're the most important part of our city. They're what gets our people from A to B within the community, and so I will be supporting this amendment.
Thank you. Councilmember Sang?
Yes, I think it's very important that we have the money to be able to maybe do these projects less expensively than it could be later on. People are hurting for work now, and they, it would be a good time for us to go out to bid on things, because I think we can get the most bang for our buck. So I'll be supporting it.
Mr. Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's no doubt in my mind, we've had an extremely tough time on this year's budget because the times are tough, and I really have no problem with getting the Budget Oversight Committee up and running again, because I do think realistically, we're going to have to look at different alternatives on money, and I'm not talking feeding people to death or whatever, but I think we're realistically going to have to look at different funding mechanisms for the city, and I think government in general is going to have to look at different funding mechanisms, because sales are down. And sales are down, one, because of the economy, but sales are also down, two, because of the internet and particular things like that, and it's going to continue to be a problem. So I do think that we are going to have to look for definite different funding sources from here on in. Period. Two, I think we had programmed in $300,000 for street maintenance that by far is not enough. I think streets are expensive, we have to absolutely keep up with them, otherwise it would become so detrimental to the city trying to play catch-up, we can't do it. I think that we have, what is it, Patrick, what is it, a 28 percent reserve?
For 2010?
Yeah. Without the million. What was that?
27.2.
Yeah, and then with the million, that takes it down to what, 23?
I believe so.
Yeah, and I think by what, state statute, or you have to have 6, 3, 3 percent. So I think if we took this million out, we're well, well over what we need to be. Now, also, the thing, too, is if things continue to get worse or whatever, all these are going to be budgeted items, but I think we need to know it now and not take it out later. But knowing that now, they're all going to come across the dais to have us vote on the expense anyway, so at that particular time, we could catch them and say, no, we can't do it. But I think it behooves us to go ahead and do it tonight, stick it in the budget where we possibly know that it's going to come out.
Thank you. Councilmember Jay?
This is a very, very difficult decision. I have several thoughts on it. I appreciate the fact that we have a 27 percent reserve, but I'm also aware that that reserve, in the past, our budget was a lot smaller, so that really doesn't represent what it used to be able to buy. It's a very, it's actually gone down quite a bit when you consider how much higher our expenses are now, within a very few years, like five years or whatever, it's gone down that much. I also appreciate the condition of the roads and the fact that we get a better buy right now, and that really pulls on my mind. I'm wondering if we can have, instead of an increase of a million dollars, can we do a thing of how much can we get for these specific projects, and that we allow up to a million dollars, but if there's some change left over, we keep it? Because as Ms. Cavara said, we do not have any places to gather more funds. This is not looking good, as well as the fact that the ballot that money's coming in are down. And I'm wondering, too, Karen, I agree with you about the fact that, why do we have to do it tonight? Can we say we will look at it again in January, when we look at the end figures, when perhaps we get a sense of the economy?
Any other comments on the budget before we, Mr. Reinhardt?
I had a question for Tim.
I'll push your button. Make sure you push your green button tonight.
First, Peranto, is it not so that if you defer maintenance, the long-term costs increase disproportionately? It's not a question of just doing it later, but the overall cost goes up?
Yes, that's correct.
The, my feeling about this is that we have a reserve for hard times, and that this is such a hard time. It looks to me like we could draw down at the current rate for a period of at least three, probably four years if we had to, and we'll have more opportunities, correct, if necessary. And to drive our long-term cause up unnecessarily doesn't seem to strike me any benefit versus having the money in the bank. So with that in mind, I'm going to be supporting the budget with the amendment.
Any other comments from council before we vote? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Patrick, at one of our strategic planning sessions, you brought forward figures as far as with our revenue stream, if it stays the way it is, and our budget, at what point in time and what year would that be that we would be fiscally into the 3 percent reserve?
Well, currently on the budget as proposed, without the additional $1 million, we're looking at having a fund balance of about 3.7 percent by the year 2013.
2013.
Again, that's if you don't make any adjustments to our annual spending and revenues.
Thank you.
We have a motion for approval with a million-dollar transfer from the General Fund Reserve to the CIP for projects maintenance. Councilmember Berry?
It's an amendment. We're voting on the amendment?
No, it's one whole motion. It's all, it's a one whole motion. So it's a main motion with some conditions.
Okay, in that case, it might like to make a...
Okay, Councilmember Berry?
Mrs. Cavara brought up some great points. We have essentially been living beyond our means for quite a while here. You know, I've attended quite a few sessions lightly put on by Colorado Municipal League, the National League of Cities, the American Planning Association, by economists all over, and it's not a question of getting past this difficult time and going back to the way things used to be. We'll never get back to that point. The way that our demographics are changing across the country, as well as the way revenue generation for local governments is increasing, we cannot count on sales tax as our only revenue here. Everyone is urging every community, every government at this point, to look at what services can you afford to keep? How can you start to live within your means? I've gotten, on this budget session, I've gotten about four comments from citizens on the budget. I've never gotten a comment before on budget from the citizens, and each of them said, "Stop spending." And I think we have to take a really hard look at what we can afford, because we can't continue to tax ourselves out of this either. So I think we have some really difficult decisions to make here, and I think that keeping, at this point in time, keeping as much as we can in the reserve gives us that opportunity as a community to discuss what we value, what's most important to us in terms of services, and to have a discussion about what can we really afford to provide and how we're going to pay for it. And to me, that brings that option. Mr. Reinhardt is absolutely right. Our public infrastructure is very important, but we have tens of millions of dollars, I think we have about $60 million of drainage projects that we need to do. We are so beyond being able to do even routine maintenance on some of our infrastructure that we have a really difficult decision to make. I think that we really do need to see what's going to happen at the end of this year and to make decisions, but in the bigger picture here, you know, we need to have a big discussion as a community as to what we really value here, what's most important, how we're going to afford to keep that, and how we're going to pay for it. And I think we need a lot more input from the citizens in making those decisions. The Budget Oversight Committee might be one way that we get some of that input, but we need additional input also, too, because we have a long-term problem here, and we need to fix that long-term problem. And we're in a good position right now into having, taking that and taking a comprehensive look, because we do have enough revenues to, so we don't have to go into a big discussion right away, or make some drastic changes right away. But it's coming up, and we can't look at this current economic situation as being just over with and we're going to go back to normal, because it's not going to be that way. The whole fabric of the way we do business has changed, and we need to address that and discuss it.
I just wanted to be clear that the motion made tonight is not an amendment, it's one large motion, so it's, there's no amendments to vote on, the way it sits right now. It's the, I believe it's the second motion you made in the packet, Mr. Stites? Okay. Please poll the council on the main motion. Motion carries five to three, with councilmembers Berry, Adams, and Jay voting no. Thank you. We'll move on to Resolution 62-2009. Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Resolution...
Resolution number 62-2009, a resolution levying general property taxes for the year of 2009 to help defray the costs of government for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for the 2010 budget year.
Motion's in order.
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution number 62-2009, levying a, a mill levy of 1.830 on general property taxes for the prop, for the year of 2009 to help defray the costs of government for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for the 2010 budget year.
Is there a second? We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Sang, discussion on the item four. Please poll the council.
Doesn't go right away. Do I say it doesn't go right away? It comes up here. You just flip the question.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item five is Resolution 61-2009. Councilmember Sang?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 61-2009, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2009 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation for additional contract building inspections related to the damage from the July 20th, 2009 storm to code consultants international in the amount of $56,550.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution number 61-2009, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2009 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation for contract building inspection services to code consultants international in the amount of $56,550.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Langworthy, correct? Ms. Langworthy, you seconded?
Yes.
Is there a discussion on item number five? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item six is an award of ITB 09-34. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a, a privilege to introduce award ITB 09-34, 38th Avenue and Kipling Street Park to Golden Triangle Construction Incorporated in the amount of $1,513,888 for the purpose of park construction. The 38th Avenue and Kipling area of Wheat Ridge has been identified as underserved in the need of a neighborhood park in both the 1992 and 2006 Parks and Recreation Master Plan. An eight-acre site was acquired in December of 2000 based upon the plan recommendations with Jefferson County Open Space Funds for the purpose of construction of neighborhood park. Phase one and two will be constructed back-to-back with scheduled, with scheduled completion in 2010. This contracted award is award for phase one and two and uses funds appropriated in 2009 and 2010. On October 29, 2009, 15 bids were received for the construction of the new park. The scope of the work was defined in the contract award encompasses phase one and two amenities and in, and includes utilities, playgrounds, shelters, plaza, practice field, spray feature, parking lots, trails, fencing, landscaping, irrigation, and turf. All bids met the initial bid requirement. The apparent low bidder for the base bid and alternates 1 to 7 was Golden Triangle Incorporated. Staff recommends the award to the low bidder based upon qualifications, experience, and pricing.
Motion's in order.
I move to award ITB 09-34, 38th Avenue, Kipling Park to Golden Triangle Construction Incorporated in the amount of $1,513,888 with the $690,000 to be charged to account number 54601800862 and $823,888 charged to account 32601800862. I further move to award a contingency amount of $100,000 to be charged to account number 32601800862.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Move on to public comment for item number six. Do we have anybody here to speak on item number six tonight? Please step forward and spell your last name for the record and your address or your city. Sorry about the cameras back there. Item six. Please spell your last name for the record and your city and your, or your address.
Marchese, M-A-R-C-H-E-S-E. First name, Kimery. I live at 10400 West 38th Avenue in Wheat Ridge, and I just want to say I'm really excited about the park. Um, the property has sat there, kind of neglected for a long time, and I'm really excited that they've also financed it in a way that it's not coming out of our city budget, that it's coming from Jefferson County, and I know a lot of people in the community support it, and that people will even volunteer time to help if needed. So I just want to say it's a really positive thing for the community. Thank you.
My name is Suzie Seeds. I live at 6147 West 35th Avenue in Wheat Ridge. I'm a Parks Commissioner, and I would like to recommend that you support this park, that we have been looking for a park in that area for many years. I, I believe the public supports it, and it's the time to have a new park for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Council discussion or questions? Councilmember Sang?
Yes, I, I would like to say, through our discussions, though, I believe that we decided that this would be a community park as opposed to a neighborhood park. I just wanted to make that statement.
Any other comments or discussions? Please poll the council on the main motion.
Motion carries seven to one with Councilmember Berry voting no.
Thank you. Item seven, Councilmember Stites?
Yeah, if I can find it. Oh, here we go.
Approval of contract award to design concepts in the amount of $30,245 for the purpose of park construction, observation, and as built services?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve the award of a contract to design concepts in the amount of $30,245 for the purpose of the park construction, observation, and as built services to be charged to account number 54601800862.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Demott, discussion on item number seven. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item eight is Resolution 59-2009. Councilmember Berry?
Yes, thank you. Resolution 59-2009, a resolution adopting amendments to the City of Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan concerning the Three Mile Plan. Colorado statutes require municipalities to adopt a three-mile plan for the communities. The purpose of this plan is to indicate in a general way how a city envisions areas outside their boundaries developing in the future if they were annexed. This plan is required prior to a municipality annexing any land. Such plan may be, extend up to three miles from the municipality's boundaries. State statutes indicate that the plan shall generally describe the location, character, extent of streets, parks, open space, public utilities, and proposed land uses. The plan is generally adopted as an addendum to the city's comprehensive plan. The current three-mile plan was presented to the Planning Commission at a November 19th, 2009 public hearing. The commission recommended adoption of the plan with the following amendments. The amendments were recommended and have been incorporated into the plan. Include the date of the current plan in the header or footer of the document. Revise the second sentence in paragraph three on page 11 to read that there should be continued communication rather than improved communication among districts and governmental agencies. It was also suggested by the Planning Commission that Clear Creek itself, not just the associated trails, be included in the plan as a recreational amenity. After discussions with Joyce Manoring Parks and Recreation Director, it's recommended that this, by staff, that this amendment not be incorporated into the plan. While rafting and kayaking are done on sections of Clear Creek west of the area, Coors Brewing Company owns the water in this section of Clear Creek downstream of the facility. For this reason and public safety concerns, if recreational uses were to be considered, water quality testing and other due diligence would need to be undertaken. In addition, there could be restrictions to access of the creek in this area due to easements currently in place. Staff recommends adopting a resolution, um, a resolution adopting amendments to the Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan concerning the Three Mile Plan.
Motion's in order.
Okay. I move to adopt Resolution 59-2009, case WPA 0802, uh, should be, okay. A resolution adopting amendments to the Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Langworthy. Do we have any presentation besides what was read in the executive summary?
Uh, Sally Payne with the Community Development Department, no. There really is nothing to add. Councilmember Berry really covered it.
Thank you. Any council questions or discussion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item nine is Resolution 58-2009. Councilmember Jay?
Resolution number 58-2009, a resolution in support of removing the options identified by the Jefferson County Schools Facilities Usage Committee that directly affect the schools in the City of Wheat Ridge. The Jefferson County Schools Facilities Usage Committee has identified possible solutions to the budget decisions the school district is facing. The options identified by the Facilities Usage Committee are 21B, close and sell Pennington Elementary School; 22A, move sixth grade to Wheat Ridge Middle School; distribute students from Martenson to Stevens, Mulholland, and Loomer Davis, which will be all, which will all be K5; 22B, make Wheat Ridge Middle School, Stevens Elementary School, a K.A. campus, and close Martenson.
Motion's in order. Oh, the motion, it should be around the second page there, maybe after the...
Oh, the recommendation. All right, I'm gotta get here. I move to approve Resolution number 58-2009 in support of removing the options identified by the Jefferson County Schools Facilities Usage Committee that directly affect the schools in the City of Wheat Ridge.
Is there a second?
Second.
We want to public comment. Please step forward and spell your last name for the record and your city and/or your address.
Hi, I'm Chad Har, H-A-R-R, with the Wheat Ridge Education Committee, and I would like to just thank you for supporting these resolutions and make it a proclamation. I just came from a Jefferson County F, uh, Facility Usage Committee meeting, and they have dwindled the list of options down to 12. Uh, option 21D and option 22A are still on the list as of tonight. Um, 22A, 22B was taken off the list. Um, and I want to urge you all to work with the other cities as well, Lakewood and Arvada, in saving the east side of Jefferson County and helping revitalize the east side of Wheat Ridge. We're on the cusp of doing some great things in the City of Wheat Ridge, and schools closing in this area would be a detriment to our students, our families, and our citizens, as well as businesses in the area. So, uh, please thank you for, uh, taking a stand and, uh, for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else to speak on this agenda item? I see we have some parents here. Council discussion before we poll the council. Councilmember Berry?
Um, I would like to ask the gentleman who just came from the committee whether the other, there were five Wheat Ridge-related items on the original list. When he, when he said that it was whittled down to two, I just wondered if it was the three, he was discussing the three in the proposed resolution or the five that affect Wheat Ridge altogether? I just wanted to ask him if there were five original, um, now it's just, um, to those two. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other call, uh, questions or discussion before we... Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to assume then that, um, option three, where Jefferson would, um, high school would be affected, is off of the list now. Thank you. And 24, which is, um, to align with other, uh, Wheat Ridge and Golden areas expanding Manning, that's off the list. That's number 24.
24 is on.
That's on. Thank you so much, and thanks for coming over right out one meeting after the next and keeping us abreast of, of what's going on. I have, um, been watching this very closely and have some friends that are on the, uh, committee, in fact, and, and being cautious. I think that, as we all know, the, the district has a difficult, difficult decision to make, and as a council, I think anything that we can do to help facilitate, um, a good resolve would be, or resolve, if there is a good resolve. I think, um, Dr. Stevenson would say that there's probably, um, no really good resolve, but if we can work together, um, as a city and as a community to work towards resolve, um, it's difficult in that it's, uh, it's never gonna be easy in anybody's backyard, regardless of whether it's Arvada or Wheat Ridge or Edgewater or, you know, uh, down at, uh, South, where they're talking Columbine, Chatfield area. So, um, I want to thank you for being diligent in attending those meetings and keeping me up to date.
Councilmember Berry?
The, um, resolution only addresses, um, two of the three proposed changes that will affect Wheat Ridge. I, I think the school district, just like the rest of every local government, has very difficult choices to make, and ones that are, um, going to impact everyone, or, um, no matter what they do, and everything's going to be controversial. Um, we have not discussed the op, one of the other options that's still on the table, which is, um, I guess, item 24, um, which affects the middle school changes, um, in the Wheat Ridge area. I, I would hope that we can discuss that and see if it's something that we can support with the school district, because I think it's also important, um, to tell them things that we think that we can support or we have no objection to, as well as telling them that things that we're absolutely against. So, at some point here, I would like us to discuss, um, option 24 and, and see if it is an option that, as a community, we can support.
I just wanted to thank the, the neighbors and Chad for emailing Councilmember Sang and myself and Councilmember Jay the last couple of weeks, so thanks for your support and information, and, uh, this will be mailed off to, uh, the Jefferson County School District tomorrow, or I'll either hand-deliver it, or we'll, we'll get it to them, the board and Cindy Stevenson, in the next day or two, so... Mr. Stites?
I just want to say one thing. We, the last several years, uh, with our NRS study, the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Study, spent a lot of time with that, and most, well, a lot of that is the neighborhood schools concept, and so I think we have to stay tight as Wheat Ridge goes and watch our schools, because that's part of the NRS and that's part of our revitalization. We've always had great, great community schools. I intend to have great, great community schools from here on in, uh, so I think we have to, anytime something like this comes up, band together, uh, because little Wheat Ridge sometimes takes it in the shorts every single time, because we're an older community, and I think that's wrong, and I have never liked that philosophy.
And that'll be on TV tonight. Any other comments or questions before we poll the council? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item 10 is Resolution 60-2009. Councilmember Demott?
Resolution number 60-2009, a resolution awarding bicycle and pedestrian master plan, phase two, in the amount of $24,950, and in connection there with approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $24,950. The city seeks to complete a master plan which will serve as guidance to construct, enhance, and improve the bicycle and pedestrian routes and connections throughout the city in reaching all major destinations. The city has secured a grant with Colorado Association for Local The city has secured a grant with Colorado Association for Local Public Health Officials through Livwell-Wheat Ridge to perform the next phase of the Wheat Ridge Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. The work will consist of developing an implementation plan and establishing priorities for the improvements required to establish proposed bike and pedestrian routes. Felsberg, Holtz, and Ulevig Consulting Engineers has been selected to perform the work. A budget appropriation of $24,950 is required to fund the project, although the grant provides for reimbursement of the city's costs.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution number 60-2009, resolution amending the fiscal year 2009 public works capital investment program budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation of $24,950 to fund the bike and pedestrian master plan phase two. I further move to award the bike and pedestrian master plan phase two to Felsberg, Holtz, and Ulevig Centennial Colorado in the not-to-exceed amount of $24,950. I further move that all costs associated with this contract be paid from account number 30-303-800-848, and that these funds be encumbered for the length of the project in accordance with ordinance number 787, 1989 series.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval seconded by Councilmember Sang and Langworthy. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council. Oh, do we have... Councilmember Berry, sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to say, Mr. Pronto, that Livwell, as well as the Jefferson County Health Department, just applied for a very large grant, kind of worked with them on parts of that to connect some of their, to the bicycle plans and trails and things, and to create some more community gardens and market gardens and things like that. So they should be, I think they should know within the next month whether that grant was awarded, and if so, I think there might be an opportunity to take this smaller grant and to expand it into a little larger, more comprehensive bicycle plan that ties all those items together and would be kind of a great amenity for the community. So maybe we'd just be watching for that.
Thank you. Please poll the council on the main motion.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for tonight. We'll move on to city managers' matters. Push your green button.
I have nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
City attorneys' matters?
I have a request for executive session, but you can take that motion after you've done elected officials' matters. It'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you. City clerks' matters?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Berry.
Yes, I just want to thank all the citizens who took time to submit comments on various agenda items recently and especially on the budget.
Councilmember Sang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the neighborhood that I represent for being so diligent and working so hard to keep our school open. Thank you.
Councilmember Jay.
I too. I want to thank the neighborhood, Chad especially. I know you've worked very hard, and I appreciated your commenting to me and informing what's going on. That's all.
Councilmember Langworthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Since this is the last meeting before Christmas, I want to say Merry Christmas to everyone, and hopefully we all have a safe holiday season. And I'm glad that there are parents out there that care enough about their children, because if it was my daughter's school, I'd probably be torn between sitting in the audience like you and asking for the same support. Thankfully, her school's not one of the ones that were up for that, but, you know, when your child goes to that school, it's very important to you, because you become part of that school community just as much as, it's not just in education, it's everything else involved with the school. So we hope that Martenson and Pennington both stay open.
Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a counselor, I want to look forward to having the mayor quickly get the Budget Oversight Committee as quickly as the new year will allow to get that going. I think it's critical. And secondly, I wanted to commend the Wheat Ridge 2020 Planning and Development Academy for already setting a date for January. We have a little bit of a break here, but Mrs. Berry's been instrumental in this, that the Planning Academy has been critical to bringing forward and helping council make decisions and educating the community on what we do and when it comes to planning. They have speakers that come in. The meetings will begin Tuesday evening, starting in February. February 2nd is the first meeting, and you get to eat dinner. And from there, from 5:30, they start around 5:30, and classes run to 6:00 to 9:00. It's only four meetings. It certainly is an incredible learning tool, and it has been really, really good in far as bringing the community together to understand what planning is about. The questions can be directed to Denise Balkis. She is our Wheat Ridge 2020 liaison person that works with us on the planning, and it's So, oh, the deadline, thank you. For reservations or registration is January 15th. So those of you looking towards your 2010 calendar might want to mark that down. I also want to wish all my fellow counselors and my citizens a very Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Demott?
Nothing tonight. Thanks.
Mr. Stites?
Oh, yeah. I'd like to thank the parent group that showed up, that you got involved, and that's what it takes. It takes you getting involved. It's a shame that it takes something like this to get you involved, but at least you got involved, and that's good, because it's not only for your own children, but it's for the community, and I thank you for that, and I think your kids will eventually thank you for that, too. We were all saddened by the death of the mayor's mother. Since I've lost my mother this year, I know what that's about, and our sympathies go to you, Jerry. Please try to do a positive thing in your community. With Christmas coming up, make sure everybody can get fed, check with your neighbors, any college kids coming home, any kids' kids. It's a great time to meet people, and it's a great time to service your community. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt, do you have anything before I...
Nothing tonight.
I also wanted to thank our family and our friends. I lost my mom December 3rd, and she was a good woman, 93 years old, and it was tough, but she's in a better place now. So I wanted to thank all the citizens and family members and friends who acknowledged that. We had her service at St. Peter and Paul, and the church was full. It looked like a Sunday mass, so she had a lot of friends, and we have a lot of friends, so I appreciate it. I also wanted to thank everybody for attending. I also want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays also from the DeTulio family out to everybody in the community. And then last, I just wanted to update the city council that the Building Code Review Task Force that we started will be meeting in January. We met with the Community Development Department and city manager, and got some things lined up for the meeting. It's going well. Mr. Reinhardt will be on the committee from the council, and Steve Thomas will be working with the task force. He was on the code review committee before, so I'm pleased the way things are starting up. We'll have our first meeting in January. We're probably going to have no more than two or three meetings, and we'll bring some recommendations to city council on policy changes that are, we've heard about for the last 18 to two years on development, redevelopment, fees, and everything else. I think you'll find it pretty comprehensive and upbeat, so that's all I have. And so we have a motion for executive session?
I move for city council to go to an executive session for conference with the city attorney under Charter Section 5.7b1 and Section 24-72-4024B, CRS specifically, for conference with the city attorney for legal advice on the water supply to the Richard Harts estate.
Is there a second? We have a motion for executive session seconded by Councilmember Sang. Please poll the council.
Did that motion include adjourning the meeting at the conclusion of the executive session? It should have said that. It doesn't say that. I apologize.
No, it doesn't have that.
I can...
I move to adjourn the meeting. May I amend my own...
Please, thank you.
May I make a friendly movement to myself to include the closing of the public meeting at the conclusion of the executive session?
Is it okay with a second? Okay, please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We're adjourned, and we'll meet in the glass conference room.
Wheat Ridge Channel 8, keeping you informed on events in your community.